Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started at the work session. We've got two or three things to talk about. And we've got a group with us that we're gonna get a little display from here shortly. So if they're...
They are.
We've got some Sylvania folks with us tonight. Ms. Tina Wilkes is gonna be doing all the talking and leading things up for us. So come on up. She's never had a problem talking before, so we've...
I haven't noticed a problem before.
Well, you know, they... I'm gonna let Ms. Wilkes talk a little bit. We've got several folks on the state and nationally and some folks who've won some T-shirt designs and book battles and all kinds of stuff. So she's got some great... I know not everybody, I don't believe, was able to make it tonight.
Well, this is the group, I think. They're all...
All right. This is it. Let's hear about it. I tell you what, let us walk around and see.
This young lady is Isabella Gollit. This is Griffin Turner. Kelly Graham. John Robert Dixon. Colby Bothrum. Kami Wilkes. And Mr. Jaden Haynes. And we took them to Birmingham in March to the state debate convention. We had never been. This was our first trip. This is Division One, so they would have been fourth and fifth graders at that time. So the littlest of the little. And of course, the teachers, as teachers, we had never been because, well, all of us back there, their teachers teach little kids. So we jumped in this wholeheartedly. And somehow, we came out with a second place at State. And we took this group back. We went to Disney World in the summer. And we got second there. And so we were very proud of them. And this is, it's harder than you would think. It is, you know, to make a tower out of straws and tape. It takes a lot. It takes a lot of practice. I think between state and national, we went through about 6,000 straws. We practiced sometimes three days a week. And to be honest with you, the reason we're so proud of them is because I probably can count on one hand the number of times we actually got the ball to stay. It's hard. If you push one straw in too far, it's short on one side. And I can tell you, it's pretty interesting when you get this group together because they have a good time while they're there. But now, when it came time, they really did good competing. But we're gonna let them. We've partially got a tower put together because we knew you guys wouldn't have enough time for that. So we're gonna try and make this ball stay up there today and let you guys just see what it will look like. Along with this group, though, I had to, I couldn't let them get up here and not mention, Isabella won second place at State for T-shirt design. And we have her T-shirt over there. Griffin Turner and John Robert Dixon and Kami Wilkes got second in book battle at State. They had to read 12 books. And they had to take a test on it. It was about 100 questions. So we were very proud of them. We took the book battle team back to State, back to National. They got top 10, but we didn't, we knew they were below fifth. They were somewhere between six and 10, but we didn't know, we didn't know exactly where. So, let's see. I guess that's all. You guys go ahead and get your stuff and you can come right here and start putting it together. While they do that, I'm just gonna kinda tell you the rules. What they're doing, science... Yes, you're gonna fill it excellent. Science has taken a more hands-on approach in the last couple of years. And we've seen a big push in engineering and mathematics. And so a lot of what we do in science now is hands-on. And so even in first grade, we do some things like this now, which this group probably never saw anything like this when they were little. But skills that they would use in making this, engineering skills, communication skills, collaboration, critical thinking, problem solving, there's a lot of problem solving because a lot of times it looks like this and you have to try to figure out how to straighten it back up. Scale and measurement. They are making a freestanding tower with plastic drinking straws and masking tape. So one of the rules, you couldn't tape it to the floor to keep it, to get it to stay there. You had to use every straw. So even if, when we went, we had a, I guess a game plan, you would say. We knew pretty much what we were gonna do regardless to what number of straws they gave you. There's a lot of scenarios. You could have 150 straws, 200, or 250 straws. And you could have 10 minutes, 15 minutes, or 20 minutes. You never really knew. So you just kinda had to practice and play around with it. But like I said, we had a strategy or a game plan regardless. We stuck with that. And if you had extra straws, they had to be taped to your tower somewhere. So everything was used. The tower after it's built must hold a tennis ball for 60 seconds. So not only is it stable and it's standing, it's also gotta hold the weight of the ball if it falls in the 60 seconds. Now, if you think, if you can imagine this, the kids would be over here and there's a line and it's like you can't go any further than them. I mean, you can't go any further than the line. You can't talk to them. You can't coach them. You can't say, look out for this. I mean, they're just totally on their own. So it's very nerve-wracking. And if you don't think there's a lot of praying going on, when you're counting seconds for that ball standing up there, it's serious. So if your tower holds the ball, then they will measure from the ball to the floor. And the tower that is the tallest that held the ball, that's your first, second, third. At State, we had 150 straws and they gave us 20 minutes. At National, we had 250 straws in 15 minutes. Now, when we were practicing this, we did 200 straws, no, we did 150 straws in 20 minutes. That was what we practiced over and over and over. And like I said, we struggled to get that. It's just, it was, it's just hard. No tower's ever replicated. They're never the same. So when they got done, well, I'll take that back. With eight minutes left, they were still on the floor, kinda like this group right here is. And I thought, well, it's just been good to be here. Because, you know, that's half of their time, really. And we're just sitting there watching them. There's nothing you can do but just watch. And then about that time, I could see, I could see Kami. She got up like this. And then the next thing I knew, Kami was standing. And I was like, oh my goodness. What's the worst thing? What's worse? You know, just totally not doing it or getting so close and not finishing. With three minutes left, it looked like this. And I was like, cool. They had a whole other level to do. And they did it within that three minutes. I mean, they just really got it up there, put the ball up, and then the timer was up. So we walked away and the tower was just almost perfect these first two levels. But when they hit that three-minute mark, they threw that tower together so fast. The last section kinda looks like this. And I brought a picture, but the ball is just coming to the side. It's amazing that it stayed there. But we had about a six-foot-four tower by the time we got done from the ball to the floor. And we were second. But it's exciting. It's fun. And I just worked the timer and kinda know a little bit about it. I don't think I could build one by myself to save my life, but... No, I didn't bring it. We got down there and there's teams coming in with like ladders to the ceiling. And it's a little bit intimidating. Division Two, you can tell that they really step up their game. Here. Wait, wait, wait. Here, Dr. Barnett's got your chair. Now, we will say, there is no money-back guarantee if this doesn't work. We did travel with this. Well, it's not. It looks, it's pretty straight comparatively speaking. Tower of power. I think they've done this for about two years. It's relatively new. I know a good win and who knows what it'll do.
There's 60 seconds in a minute.
Thank y'all for letting us. Sure. Get a picture with Dr. Barnett. Oh, well. Kinda hold it up something you can at least tell what they were doing. Well, here, you hold part of it and she can hold part of it. And we won't lock them in behind you. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Do one more. One, two, three.
We appreciate y'all for coming and sharing that. Ms. Wilkes, appreciate very much all the kids. I know you had to take time out of your busy schedule and come. Appreciate y'all being here and sharing that. That was fantastic.
They're rushing football practices. It's softball practice now.
Don't get after it, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. Just a few items. I know we have a budget meeting, our first budget meeting tonight. And so we're gonna try to wrap up our work session here fairly soon. Just wanna talk to you a little bit about some things that we've got going on that will be impacting us here this year. Some stringlining and efficiency type things that we've been able to do, been fortunate enough to do. Today, Mr. Cooper, Mrs. Klein, and Ms. Holmgren and I recently met with SunTrust. They've been meeting with them. They've been meeting and they've carried the load of it, but I set it on the day meeting. And we're going to be able to do some purchasing cards for our teachers' supplies, materials money. We're gonna be able to do those purchasing cards. It's gonna be even, I think it's gonna be much easier and better than we did just a few years ago when we had them previously. It's also gonna extend over into just our regular council table. And it's gonna have some rebates and some things like that. So I think it's gonna be a source of revenue. We're actually, if we looked at it right, we're already spending what we're spending just by paying those bills. It's different weapons now. It's greater, 80-plus thousand dollars in string equipment in group classes. So there's some positive there. Actually, business stringlines efficiencies back a few months ago. You gentlemen approved at my recommendation the purchase of school food. I think that's been a very beneficial purchase. I've heard many administrators, principals, and folks that really enjoyed that, putting it in there and sending it out and having a time for knowing kinda when it, knowing who's gonna repair it and when it's gonna be repaired. I think that's been well received by administration and everybody. So that's been encouraged to see that. Another area of stringlining is our professional development request. In the years past, leading up this, we've had our ASOP system where you go on and get put in a request, whether it be for a personal day or sick day or professional development day or whatever type of day that it might be. And then it would be requested, approved by the principal, be put into your box and be approved there. But there was also a paper form that you had to complete. Well, it was kinda inefficient to do both. And so we worked over the last little bit. We've kinda come to some ways to do this. We've eliminated paper copies. There's some guidelines to do that. We've gotta have, we've gotta know our fund source. We've gotta know some of those things that have to be included on that. And that's gonna be a little bit of a process, but I think that'll be something that'll be real, real positive for folks who are not have that implication of, you know, work to do that. Any questions on those items? Well, I think it's efficient. It's much more efficient. It allows people better record of when things are processed on all accounts, on all those things we discussed. One item that's been brought up for us and I wanna mention it to you today. I spoke to some of you individually about it, but I do wanna mention it today and perhaps, you know, at the next meeting make a formal, you know, recommendation about this regarding travel and professional development for our teachers and for our administrators. In our per diem, right now, it's $35 in state, 45 out of state. I think that's probably, we talked a little bit, I think that's probably pretty fair. I don't necessarily know that we wanna change that. But at some point in time in the past, when people went to travel and they were at a restaurant and they ate, you know, they, at some point in time, though, in the years past, your tilt was part of that per diem. Well, it no longer is. But that's a part of, in my opinion, that's part of your dining. That's part of your meal. That's part of your service. That's part of that meal. What I'm considering, and I'm talking to Mr. Cooper about this, I think, you know, for those meals on that travel, for that per diem, for providing those on those, I think we need to include the tilt, but we need to cap that at 15%. Just include that. And it still wouldn't exceed the $35 mark per day.
That's the maximum.
That's still the maximum. That would still be the maximum.
So if somebody did spend $35 and they had tips and kicked it up to $35, they didn't get the $35, they got whatever amount was without the tilt.
Sure, sure. And so I think they, perhaps, I don't know all the details about it, but I think at some point in time, it was taking advantage of. I've spoken to other districts, most of the districts, they set the cap and they include the tilt because that is a part of the service. That's a part of your meal. So I think, you know, if we're gonna ask somebody to do that and travel, I think that's something we need to take into place. Also, the next item is travel and professional development for principals. At this point in time of the year, we still have, you know, all the rest of August, all of September, February, October, one, I think we've got four principals who are, who've spent all of their travel money for this year. And all that travel is a prudent, you know, once they turn it in and verify that it is related to their job duties, related to their job duties. And so at least four of them already at this point, I believe, if I'm correct, have already ran out.
What was that number?
Well, for principal, and I say travel, I really mean miscellaneous mileage, miscellaneous, all that kind of stuff. For the, for the principal is 2,500.
Is it for the head principal?
That's the head principal, yes. For assistant principal, it's 1500. And then their PD monies, it's 1,000 for both, for your principal or assistant principal, it's $1,000. I think we need to look at possibly bumping those up a little bit as we look at, I think there's some part of their job duties that they're not being covered.
Let me ask you a question. Would that be, what would that, what would some of those items include? Would some of that include in-county?
It could include in-county, out-of-county, for example, you know, going to the post office, going to the bank, supervising baseball, basketball, football games, coming to required meetings that we require here before.
Well, that's what I was saying, is if you're a pluggy coming to, coming over here, it's not gonna cost you nearly as much as if you're out or across or from.
It is. That's something that's been discussed, you know. Come to a meeting here, if we have a dozen meetings in here here just a month or maybe we'll, if you're at Plankview or Viper Sylvania, you know, you're relatively negligible, but if you're coming from Collins, when you've got a 25-mile boat late, that's miles times, you know, a month, it's a, that even gets up your travel miscellaneous allocation pretty quickly, much more quickly than just some of these folks that are nearby. And, you know, really, everything that they travel with, all this has to be, you know, verified, proven it is related to their job. So all we're really wanting to do is provide an amount that allows them...
Well, is that the reason, is that one of the reasons why that would be some of those are topped or... I would almost, I would, I'd almost take that out of, out of the equation, meetings here.
Yeah, that's something that we discussed a little bit because of the fact, you know, is there, could there be a need to say, you know, these are meetings that I call or we're requiring here later? I know it gets a little bit hazy as far as checking and coding and making sure, you know, what was, you know, what did I call, what did this person, it gets a little blurry at times and it could be difficult for them to keep up with. But I don't think this is something that's being taken advantage of in, you know, bad way. I think it's just something that we need to look at, how we're gonna do that, how we're gonna address. I've spoken to Mr. Cooper quite a few times about this and I think he can speak for himself, but I think he sees this annually and he thinks that, I believe he will agree with me through our conversations, that this is something we need to look at.
So those coded to the local school?
Every administrator has that allotment, whether, you know, 2,500 for the principal.
But it's coded to the location?
Exactly, that principal.
Right.
Yeah, right, that principal.
So none of it would be like central office type of coding?
Is the biggest majority of it being used just traveling within the county? The miscellaneous, they cannot use their PD for any kind of miscellaneous travel or supervision. Their professional development has to be professional development. If they go over their professional development, they can't borrow it from the miscellaneous. Board members in years past made it that way because they felt like the professional development is the most important. And if I can, speaking with Dr. Barnett, we felt like that the professional development needed to be bumped up a little higher than miscellaneous.
Yeah, but when you look at the professional development, $1,000 a year professional development, there's a lot of things that they should do, they want administrators to be cutting edge and taking advantage of some of the professional development opportunities that benefit them and benefit their employees, their faculty, their staff, their students, their community. And, you know, $1,000 for professional development, it just doesn't go very far in what they're needing to do. And, you know, with teachers and personnel like that, we don't necessarily have a cap on it. And I dare say, we spend well over $1,000 a year on a lot of teachers for professional development.
Class membership. How long has it been said in a thousand? A while. Over 20 years? Well, you know, things have gone up a little bit, you know, in 20-year periods.
So that's something I did want to, blindside, necessarily make that recommendation out, but I did want to create dialogue about that discussion. One item that I do wanna talk about here that's not on here, and I apologize, I should've had it added on here. A couple, I think maybe in the last meeting we had, we talked a little bit, we met with Schneider Electric and talked about some energy conservation tools and a program that they provided to us that's budget neutral, they're required by law, but again, I, you know, they had to make the proposal, we entered into agreement, this is what, at least wherever we spend, they're required by law to save us that much. And if they do not meet that expectation, they're required by law to write us a check and make that difference. Obviously, they're not going to, they're gonna create an exterior where they're gonna make money. So that means most likely they're gonna cut it with a safety net and it means that there's gonna be more money in our balances. Also, you include projects that you're already gonna spend money on, which saves you money down the road. And currently, much like in a program or a project like this, the 300-plus air conditioning units that we have, they're over 20 years old, that we know within the next couple of years, we're gonna have to replace. And we know, we know that our shelves out the next few years, we're gonna have to spend that money. So putting it in a package like this that allows all this to be bundled in a budget neutral, balanced manner is really important and really nice. We also, some of you spoke with Naresco and they have an interesting, they do a very similar type thing, but they also have a solar component that they provide that some districts use to offset that, some use it for revenues, they sell that power they generate, that to TDA or whoever it may be, and it just depends on how you look at it. What I, if plans to do is based on the bill law because they are required to be budget neutral. And if they don't cost anything, there's, you do much, you hire that much like you do an attorney or an architect with a, you know, a special service that they do. And so what we're gonna do is request qualifications from these companies, any other company that's interested in that, have them submit their qualifications to us in a timely manner. We'll, at some point in time, next month or so, maybe we'll bring that up after you all let you look at it and hope the board makes a decision moving forward.
Did I hear any questions about that? I thought those made a very...
That's very interesting.
Well, I think obviously they have to do their homework. If they're gonna provide, propose a package that, many of these packages are, you know, $10 million or so many excess, some less, and they're required that whatever we spend that we're gonna save, guaranteed, guaranteed to save at least that much.
Well, they'll give us money back.
They'll give us money back. They've got to do their homework. You don't stay in business very long without doing your homework that way. It does have an issue matter. So I think, you know, there are a couple of good options there. There may be others when we put out this request for qualifications. There may be others. I expect there's something. So we'll find out, but I'm interested in hearing who looking into that because we do know that in many projects in which, and by bundling in this, like those 300 units, if our maintenance folks have to replace 300 units, that's gonna take a lot of work. It's gonna take a lot of time to impact there already the decision. But this will allow them to focus on other areas as well, but it'll still provide that fee.
And it creates a system too, it creates just little parts, it creates a system which creates that efficiency and the energy.
So we'll be bringing that, we'll be bringing that to you guys.
Thank you to the DDA. Well, thank you to the, that Espo, that you're representing, your constituents. Do you have anything that you want to discuss?
Of course. Uh, thank you for the purchasing cards. That may eliminate some of the problem, the email I sent you the other day about the dates that are confusing for people on filling out the purchase order, some being told this, some being told that. Maybe that will eliminate some of that problem. Uh, thanks for the eliminating the PD forms, so I don't do it twice. Sorry about that. I already messed one up. I'm not following one though, so I'm sure.
It's a process. It's going to take a little bit of time. Anytime you do something different like that, there's, but I think.
I put half the information in the box. There's another half off there. At least we're not having to do it twice. It was like, I was doing it twice and it was kind of, I'm having to do it twice. Uh, the other, I guess the issue I just want to bring up will be the eclipse I've had for all these many phone calls as you did, which I asked for my phone calls, so I'm not playing. I mean, I asked for opinions, so I got them. The first problem was the teachers were concerned about liability. I mean, in the classroom, I say, "Quit talking," and they keep talking. So you know good and well, you go outside, keep your glasses on, they're going to take the glasses off. I mean, we know this happens. Uh, so a lot of teachers were concerned, well, how liable am I if little Johnny takes his glasses off and damages his vision and, you know, I might go get in trouble. So eliminated liability. Well, now, a lot of teachers are upset. They feel punished, I guess is the word, maybe that's the word I've been using. Uh, they feel punished now that we can't go outside and watch it, which I was probably one of the ones that started that, but, uh, I'll be honest, I'm not a liar. But I, I mean, I slipped on it. I slipped on it and thought about it, and I thought, you know, if I worked at McDonald's or Hile or anywhere else, it's a normal day, so I would have to take off if I wanted to see it anyway. But I think maybe a lot of teachers were just upset because originally we were going to watch it. They weren't. So I just think that was a lot of the problem. And then, uh, some of the other questions I've got from other schools have been things that we've already taken care of, so I'll bring on Mr. Crawford on that. He's done a great job. I don't know if you hear any from him, but, um, like, you know, we're going to be going to lunch at this time. You're going to be doing this, this, this. These classes will be moved to this building so they can go to the bathroom. So some of the other schools that concerns they have sent me were, what are they going to do for lunch, which, like I said, we got this email like two or three days ago, so he took care of that. And then some of these kids that are going to lunch at nine in the morning, what are they going to do for afternoon snacks because they can't go outside? And students that need to go to the nurse, especially, she said there were some diabetic kids that had to go. I don't know how that would be handled. That might be something, don't know if y'all thought of that one, but I guess the nurse would have to go outside and come in. And there was a class or a building that didn't have internet. Like, it's not even ran to the building, so how would they watch it? But these were just some concerns I wanted to bring to your attention.
Those are all, those are all good concerns. You know, when we originally sent out any information saying that we were going to allow students to go outside and view it and purchase the glasses and that sort of thing, if a teacher or a parent had given permission, we wanted to provide those glasses, see if we could possibly do that, and then we wanted to have a teacher or a parent permit their child to view. And that was our original plan. That's what we hoped to do. I also, like you, I understand some teachers were concerned and they felt like they were taking on some liability by taking some units out to do that. And that was the original plan, speaking forward to the weekend when we received a letter or an email from Amazon who says, "All these glasses that you ordered, we can't verify they're legitimate, that we can't verify that they will protect you from the sun." Well, that changed the game. And then we got reports that some that were sent to us that were supposedly safe when tested could not be proven to be safe. Well, in that decision, when I know that at least half of them, the reseller who sold them to us tells us they're not safe, and then some of the ones that have been tested, they tell us they're not safe, and that tells me I don't feel like I can put students out there to view it with those glasses, knowing what I know. Now, you know, some districts have chosen the option to dismiss her. Some have chosen the option to leave, cancel the date. You know, I feel like personally, we've been in school two weeks. We need to be in the business of educating our kids, and I think this is a real opportunity for us, you know, while it may not be optimal, is viewing on a streaming TV, is that the most optimal way of viewing the eclipse, you know, by no means? But it's better than sending, in my opinion, it's better than sending kids out there with glasses that we can't verify, that we don't know. You know, I understand the time constraints, you know, the time there. Hopefully, people will be with a class in which they can learn about the eclipse, take some time, maybe a portion of that time about the eclipse, about how it impacts plant life, the solar, the earth, the atmospheric pressure, all these things. And maybe part of that time could be their traditional or regular academic time that they have with those kids. I do know when we first mentioned it, that there was a lot of discussions about lunch, about, you know, how we're going to watch it. I said, I know the spokes are supposed to drill them. I believe they're going to have a watch party. They're getting several of their groups together and have a big watch party. They've got some design lessons that they're going to do with that. People are going to get in different manners, you know, with lunch. I realize that it expedites it, but it doesn't expedite it anymore. In fact, it expedites it less than we would in a normal half-day release with a weather issue or something like that. So, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we weighed a lot of things out, and I lost sleep over it. I can assure you, many hours on what to do. But my intent was, was never to have teachers hunker down in the building. It was never to lock buildings down or anything like that. It was to keep our kids safe, provide an educational opportunity for something that is happening. I felt, and with the response of a lot of other folks, legal folks, other educators, superintendents, whatever, when it all came down, that was what we just felt was, you know, in the best interest of what we, what we did. I realized, like you mentioned, some folks, when I said we were going out and watch it, some folks didn't like that. Some folks weren't going to like that. When I said we're going to stay in the building, some folks didn't like it. And oddly enough, a lot of it were the same folks. You know, so, you know, it is what it is, and I, that's what I've decided that I feel comfortable doing, because on Tuesday, at least on Tuesday, I won't have to wake up wondering if some kid at optometrist called, I sent him out with glasses, that I can't verify how good they are. And whether or not we have liability or not, I would personally feel liable for that if I did that. And so that's kind of how, I just want to give you a little idea of how I came to my conclusions.
I just wanted, I mean, I wanted to mention, like I said, I did send the email to our ARs and said, "Hey, you know, give me some opinions," so I, because, I mean, I knew mine, but sometimes mine is just me, and I didn't know what everybody else thought, and I got it. Well, I asked for it. I got it. But everybody was saying the same thing. We'd like to go home. We'd like to be punished. And I'm thinking, well, you know, I'd like to go home too, but.
When teachers staying at work is punishment, we've got an issue.
Well, I did put a sentence in there. I said, "Just keep in mind, we're planning on liability, and then remove the liability, and then we're going to appoint again." So I'll make it a reminder.
I appreciate your shit. Thank you.
Thank you for being the last to reach you, Ms. Megan. I haven't had any of the calls that David has, obviously. My calls have been about, okay, school's not getting up for three o'clock. I have a second child. What am I going to do? My response has been, well, you know, it's not going to affect a lot of us because we don't get up for three o'clock anyway. If every school got out at the same time, you know, it'd be great, but throughout the county, they let go at different times. And I've had more calls this afternoon that was just really raving mad about it, and I said, "It's one time a year and probably never getting to three o'clock time." So we don't have time enough to make arrangements for it, so, you know, this one, I can't see it right.
Well, I appreciate it.
The other thing I have is Espo usually has a work session with y'all in October. We need to know if y'all will have a work session with us this year or not. We would gladly be to it. Try to be as mean to somebody as we can.
You have picket days in October.
I don't have any dates at all at this time. We just want to know if y'all wanted to do that and if so. Last year, y'all gave us some dates, so if you could give us two or three dates, well, we could kind of make arrangements for it.
I'll hold, hold the next few days. We'll get some dates and I'll send them to you.
I didn't just want to wait till last minute and say, "Hey, we're going to be to y'all at such and such a time if we work together on it, if I'm not there." Thank you.
Mr. Cooper, you want to get started with the budget hearing?
Can we take just a small break so we can hand this out?